Shall we get started then? Yes, please. All right. Good afternoon, everyone. It is 1:30. We'll call to order the special meeting of the Fox Canyon Groundwater Management Agency Board of Directors. I ask everyone to please rise. Dave, would you lead us in the pledge?
If you can place your hand over your head and follow after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic
for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I thank you. Keely, a roll call, please.
Chair West.
Yes.
Director Araniou.
Here.
Director Craven.
Here.
Director Borchert.
Here.
As there's only one item on the agenda, I gather we don't need to review that, okay? Public comments. This is an opportunity for public comments on matters not on today's agenda. If anyone wishes to come forward, do it now. Seeing none, we'll move on to the board member comments. Comments by board members? Moving on to the primary agenda. Item number one.
Good afternoon, Chair West, members of the board, Kim Lope, GMA staff. And before I turn it over to DUDAC and they jump into this presentation, I did want to bring to your board's attention an error that was in my board letter. Thank you, Director Araniou, for catching that. I had mistakenly indicated that the public comment period ends March 3rd. Correctly, the correct date is April 3rd. And when Director Araniou brought that to our attention, we did reissue the board letter electronically, but some people may have had it before, and your board packet has the incorrect date, so I wanted to make that correction. And that's all you're going to hear from me at this point before I turn it over to Jill Weinberger with DUDAC, who's going to lead the workshop.
Good afternoon. I am Jill Weinberger with DUDAC. And the board workshop today, I think, I hope you all know, is very much designed to be interactive and to get your questions answered on the material that's in the groundwater sustainability plans. The overall focus today is more on the background information that builds the structure on which the planning part will be based, but I'm happy to take questions on any and all of it that comes up as it occurs. So the structure today, we're going to go through what the goals are, as far as I see it, to hopefully get your input on particular critical items that have to come from the board. We're going to talk a little bit about the development process for the GSPs and the background there getting in. Then the bulk of this presentation will be on the conceptual hydrogeologic understanding of these basins and how they interact. So you're going to hear me say it now, and you'll hear me say it a lot today. You all know, you're aware that you are part of the Fox Canyon Groundwater Management Agency, not just for the Oxnard Plain or just for the Pleasant Valley Basin. And so even though the GSPs have been written that way, because that's how DWR describes it, we're going to be looking at this in a more holistic view of the world. As we get through that information, coming up in the second workshop, we're going to be talking about the sustainable management criteria under SIGMA. What's currently proposed in these draft, preliminary draft GSPs, and how your board will actually continue to shape that before these drafts become final. And then ultimately getting into a discussion of the monitoring networks, which is really how you're going to be able to measure over the next 20 years progress towards sustainability going forward. So here are the workshop goals. Today, we're going to focus in on that technical background information. So providing the information that we think the board will really need in order to make informed decisions on management for these basins. And there are a lot of decisions coming up. And those decisions are kind of listed out in the SIGMA language under these critical areas for board input. So looking at what are the sustainability goals for the basins. Those goals under SIGMA are overarching framework for sustainability. They're not tied to a specific number. Then, I think you've heard it probably multiple times, there has to be a decision on a local decision on what's significant and unreasonable for these basins, because that will define the undesirable results in the GSPs. The minimum thresholds have to be set. Those minimum thresholds are, if you're thinking in the case of a water level, that's the lowest water level you would see in a well or a network of wells before the basin would be determined to be experiencing undesirable results. Setting the measurable objectives. Those measurable objectives are sort of the numerical way of looking at the sustainability goals. So where would you like the water level, for example, in a well to be over a long period of time, allowing for fluctuations with drought and recovery? Looking at the interim milestones. And the interim milestones, we haven't talked a lot about before, but these are the five-year goals that are set forward in the GSP to help determine the path towards sustainability. And those are numerical goals. And so that is a policy decision that the board can make for, is it going to be a linear approach to sustainability? Is there going to be some curve to that approach? What is the glide path to get you there over 20 years? Projects. I know that projects are right now in the board's Ops Committee's hands in determining how those projects are going to be analyzed and dealt with in the GSPs, so that's obviously critical for moving forward in the long run with looking at the sustainable yield of the basin in the future. And coming up with future modeling scenarios. You know, the modeling's on us, right? But what the scenarios are, what the types of situations are that the board would like modeled, we would like input from you. So that was the basic background. And we're going to be coming back to that bullet point list a number of times today, but let's take a quick look. I think most of you have had a chance to read through the GSPs, or at least look through them in some level. Chapter one is that background information. It's pretty basic information that's spelled out in the legislation for what needs to be in there, along with some background on climate and population and demographics, that kind of stuff. Chapter two is really what we're going to be focusing on today, and we're going to be focusing on it for all of the basins. Looking at the conceptual model, what are the groundwater conditions, the historical water budget. Chapter three is really what we're going to be focusing on next Friday. I guess a week from this Friday, right? Looking at the sustainable management criteria. And you're going to see a remarkable similarity in that list under chapter three to what you saw as the critical areas for board input, right? Sustainability goals, undesirable results, minimum thresholds. Interrupt me anytime. Measurable objectives. Chapter four, we're looking at the monitoring network. Chapter five is the projects. And then I did want to take just a second to point out the wealth of information that is in the appendices. One of the things that has really come together as part of this development process is taking information that was collected by many different agencies, many different individuals, entities throughout this region, and bringing that together under one roof in these GSPs. And that's, all of that information is being incorporated in the ways that we can into developing our understanding of the basin. And you'll see the raw data, a lot of it, in these appendices. So there's the Public Outreach and Engagement Plan, and there's some technical memoranda, but we've got elevation hydrographs, right? The history of water levels in wells. We've got those for 390 wells in Oxnard, 80 in PV, 222 in the Las Poses Basin. We've got water quality hydrographs. What have the different constituents, chemical constituents in the water looked like over time? For 914 wells in Oxnard, 121 in PV, 203 in the Las Poses Valley Basin. And we've got some statistics, some analysis of those water quality data for 273 wells in Oxnard, 28 in PV, and 95 in Las Poses. So we're really starting to get our arms around the wealth of data and put it in one place and try to then analyze those data in a cohesive way towards managing these What's still to come? I think you've seen this before. While we're still looking at developing future model scenarios, and we are looking to your board for input on what some of those model scenarios would look like. There's a mandatory model of the future with no projects. So that's the future baseline. That's got to be done. We know that one. But what about future with projects? We have to revise the sustainable management criteria, and we've held stakeholder workshops to get stakeholder feedback on that. Hopefully, that stakeholder feedback is also reaching your board. We will certainly be getting written comments, or we hope to get written comments at the end of the comment period, by the end of the comment period. And we're going to be revising this same five list of bullet points that you saw two slides ago and two slides before that, right? All of these sustainable management criteria under SIGMA. And with that, we will then develop the future estimated sustainable yield for the basin, and that'll be a range. Yes?
Do you want questions as you go on?
Absolutely.
So in the draft GSPs, there was a mention of a United model that was Scenario F, if I remember correctly.
Yeah.
Has that model with no projects already been run, and those are the numbers that are in the draft GSPs?
No. So that is an existing with no projects. That's an existing baseline with no projects. It still includes the historical spreading from the United Water Conservation District's spreading grounds. So that's not our future sustainable yield with no projects.
Okay.
You want to weigh in on that? Okay. I'm going to be looking to these guys to help me out along the way. So let's kind of dive in now to the conceptual hydrogeologic understanding and build how we understand these basins to work together, because that is going to be critical for management decisions. Looking first at the basin overview, you know, I alluded to this already. This is the Fox Canyon Groundwater Management Agency. It's not specific to any one basin and encompasses four, and we've prepared the preliminary drafts for three basins. The Oxnard in purple, Las Poses in green, and the Pleasant Valley in yellow. We know, and this agency has known for a long time, that these basins are interconnected. That's why the boundaries of the Fox Canyon Groundwater Management Agency, if I can pull up the cursor, maybe not, are in red. Right? So the Fox Canyon Agency covers the actual aerial extent of the Fox Canyon aquifer, which covers multiple basins. There are a few key connecting aquifers, as you might imagine. There's the Fox Canyon aquifer shown, outlined in red. And the other one that we're going to be talking about today is actually a much smaller one, but it's still critical in connecting these basins. Is it coming up on this? Oh, there we go. It's actually along Arroyo Las Poses. So it's a shallow aquifer. It's much smaller than the Fox Canyon aquifer, but there is a connection between the eastern Las Poses area and the Pleasant Valley Basin through this shallow alluvial aquifer, and we'll see some evidence for that later on. So if we start with sort of the traditional DWR view of the world, and we look just at the Oxnard Basin, few key terms to keep in mind, there's an upper aquifer system and a lower aquifer system. The upper aquifer system is the Oxnard and Magoo aquifers, and they are only found and identified and labeled as those aquifers in the Oxnard Subbasin. There are age-equivalent sediments that don't produce the same amount of groundwater, particularly in Pleasant Valley, and they were deposited under different conditions. And so we have a different name for those in Pleasant Valley. The lower aquifer system, we have the Weneme aquifer, the Fox Canyon aquifer, and the Grimes Canyon aquifer. Again, the Weneme is really identified in Oxnard. We have age-equivalent sediment in both West Las Poses and East Las Poses and in Pleasant Valley, but we call that the Upper San Pedro Formation there. I think one of the new designations that has come out because of the SIGMA process is that we have to define, well, we don't have to. We can define management areas, and this is an area also for board input, management areas within these basins. And some of them have already been naturally defined based on water level changes, and we'll look at that in Las Poses. But new to the Oxnard Subbasin, I'll get to the 4-Bay in just a minute, is this East Oxnard Plain Management Area. So that is actually designated right now in the preliminary draft GSPs as a separate management area, and you will see that that management area is outside of the Fox Canyon Groundwater Management Agency jurisdictional boundary, but within the DWR basin boundary. And of course, the reason that it's outside the jurisdictional boundary is that there is no Fox Canyon aquifer there, and that's how the jurisdictional boundaries were drawn. So this is a separate management area. There's not nearly the wealth of data in that area as there is in the rest of the Oxnard Subbasin. And currently, within the GSPs, the proposed thresholds and management actions apply equally across that boundary, but it doesn't have to remain that way. The other thing I should have pointed out earlier was, of course, this general outline in sort of orange here, which is the 4-Bay area. And that's where United operates its spreading grounds, where surface water from the Santa Clara River is diverted into the spreading grounds. It infiltrates into the groundwater basin, and it actually recharges and replenishes groundwater in the Oxnard Plain as well as in West Las Poses. So again, here's now, moving to Pleasant Valley, here's sort of the traditional DWR view of the world, which is the Pleasant Valley Basin in this orange color. As I said before, there's no upper aquifer system designated for that basin, but we have a shallow alluvium and an older alluvium in that basin. And the shallow alluvium is along Arroyo Las Poses and Cunehoe Creek, excuse me, Cuyegus Creek and Cunehoe Creek over here. That shallow alluvium actually does connect between East Las Poses and Pleasant Valley. Lower aquifer system, we've got the Upper San Pedro Formation, which is not designated as an aquifer, Fox Canyon aquifer, and the Grimes Canyon aquifer. Pleasant Valley, we also have a separate management area that is very similar, there we go, that is very similar to what you saw in Oxnard, right? It's outside the jurisdictional boundary, but within the DWR boundary, because there is no Fox Canyon aquifer there. There's a fault that runs along that boundary. Las Poses Valley, oh, wait a minute. I forgot. Of course, the reason I added the purple first here is to remind myself that the traditional view under DWR of just looking at Pleasant Valley doesn't fully describe this, right? So the Pleasant Valley Basin is connected to the Oxnard Basin, particularly in the Fox Canyon aquifer. Here we go now to Las Poses, where we've got already some management areas that have been talked about for quite some time. So this is just the Las Poses Valley Basin. Again, we've got the shallow alluvial aquifer along the Arroyo. We also have another shallow aquifer, which is the Eppworth Gravels aquifer, and that's called out as its own management area, because it's hydrologically got a limited connection to the Fox Canyon aquifer down below, and we'll see that in a cross-section. We also have the lower aquifer systems here, the Fox Canyon and the Grimes are old familiar friends. And just like in Pleasant Valley, we've got the Upper San Pedro Formation. But I'm going to go through the same thing. It's all connected, right? So we've got spreading here in West Las Poses, excuse me, spreading in the 4-Bay that recharges Oxnard and West Las Poses. We've got the connection along the Arroyo between East Las Poses and Pleasant Valley. And we've got a fault, here we go, the Somas Fault that runs somewhere along here, that actually limits the hydrologic connection between east and west. And we see that, the evidence for that is water levels that we'll get into in a minute. So ultimately, what this looks like from a hydrologic perspective is kind of this blue overlay here. This is all connected in the Fox Canyon aquifer. These areas are connected. Oh, I just had the pointer buzz at me. I don't know if, I'm a little nervous about it now. And then we've got the East Las Poses Management Area connected to Pleasant Valley along the Arroyo.
Jill, could you go back that slide?
Yeah.
At a previous meeting, and maybe it was one of the stakeholder meetings, but I recall you saying that you thought the West Las Poses Management Area was connected directly north to the PV Basin, north of, in other words, the connection was north or south. You see where you have the West Las Poses kind of designated, and then there's this line that...
The curvy line.
Yeah.
Yeah, I will say that fault boundary is not well-defined, both in the subsurface as far as offset is concerned and exactly the trace of it. So, you know, some faults are really nice, and they uplift big mountains, and we can tell exactly where they are. This one, we see based on water level changes, that there's got to be something going on in the subsurface that's limiting the connection. But I don't think, I mean, it could have been that in a previous slide I had misdrawn it, which is certainly possible. These are all approximate overlays based on my putting together PowerPoint. But this, it's, I don't recall it ever being straight north-south, if that's what you're describing.
Well, I'm describing more there that where you have labeled WL-PMA.
Yeah.
Almost moving south from that area directly into the PV Camarillo area, is what I thought I heard, and so that's why my question. That's something quite different than what we've heard over the years, those of us who've come to these meetings for a long time, that we thought there was a connection 4-Bay area eastwards to the West Las Poses, but not from the north to the south, under the hills there that separate Camarillo and Somas.
There's not, we're not seeing a connection between, a direct connection under the Spanish Hills between West Las Poses and Pleasant Valley.
Okay.
Yeah, no, I completely agree with that. There is quite a prominent, as I said, some faults are nice, and they uplift things for us, and those hills are an uplift from a fault. So that's, yeah, we're not modeling that as a direct connection across that boundary.
Thanks for clarification.
Yeah, no, thank you for asking that. Yeah, I see. With the overlay, it does make it look, yes, that's a good point. So although these areas are hydrologically connected, they're not hydrologically connected across that boundary. The West Las Poses is connected to Oxnard, and the Pleasant Valley is connected to Oxnard. I should have actually taken out the area of the Spanish Hills there to make that clearer. Is that, was that the source of the confusion?
It could be for others. I just, I remember hearing that in a previous meeting someplace, and I wanted to double-check that, because it was something that was new to me.
Yeah, there's not a, there's not a direct connection there. Okay. We are going to look at a couple of cross-sections, and I'm going to start actually with a cross-section in the Oxnard Subbasin. It runs more or less north-south, although we've chosen perhaps unhelpfully to label it as west to east, because on the left side of the graph that you're going to see, the cross-section you're going to see is the Pacific Ocean. So we're going to go from the Pacific up into the 4-Bay on this next cross-section, looking down into the earth. And so here we have it. Here's the Pacific Ocean, the left side, 4-Bay on the right side. And the little blue arrows are just diagrammatic representations of water flow in these basins. So you can have flow between the, between the upper aquifer system here, shown in the light tan, and the lower aquifer system. You can have flow between these aquifers vertically. We also know that in the 4-Bay, we have flow from the United Water Conservation District that's directly into the ground in the 4-Bay, and that flow can go east or west, north or south. It goes, and it replenishes both the upper aquifer system and the lower aquifer system directly from that one 4-Bay location, and the flow moves through the aquifers. If we look now at Pleasant Valley, so this is a cross-section, again, more or less north to south here. We've got southwest on the left side into the Oxnard Subbasin, and we've got the northeast on the right, so heading towards the Spanish Hills and the faulting that we see there and Arroyo Las Poses. Again, we've got diagrammatic arrows, not representative size of flow, but you can have flow both vertically and horizontally in these aquifers. We know that there is infiltration of surface water into the subsurface along Arroyo Las Poses. So it starts out as a stream flow, surface water flow, goes into the gravels, the shallow aquifer there, and it can travel in the subsurface along the Arroyo Las Poses, and it can also recharge both the deeper aquifers and the shallower aquifers from there. The other thing to point out is that on this western boundary between the Oxnard Subbasin in the east and the Pleasant Valley Basins, excuse me, the Oxnard Subbasin to the west and the Pleasant Valley Basin to the east, we have flow directly across those boundaries, particularly in the lower aquifer system, so in the Fox Canyon aquifer. There's absolutely flow across that boundary, even though it's a basin boundary in DWR's Las Poses cross-section, so now we're looking from west, will be on the left, east on the right, going across this fault that we've talked about, the Somas Fault in the Las Poses Valley Basin. Couple things to notice, again, with these blue arrows. We've got the Oxnard Subbasin in the west, and we have flow across, even though this is the Wright Road Fault, and there is a surface manifestation of that fault, it does not impact flow across it. And so there's flow both into West Las Poses and out of West Las Poses, depending on water levels and water level elevations and gradient, which direction the water's going to flow. There is certainly flow that can happen between, the vertical flow that can happen between the Fox Canyon aquifer and the Grimes Canyon aquifer and the Upper San Pedro Formation. And then, as I was saying before, you know, the Somas Fault, here we go, we see changes in water level elevation across that fault. So if we look at the fall of 2015, we have about a 290-foot elevation difference in wells that are screened solely in the Fox Canyon aquifer, that were both measured in October of fall, in October of 2015. And on the east side of that fault, we've got elevations around 150 feet above mean sea level. On the west side of that fault, we've got elevations that are minus 140 feet, so 140 feet below mean sea level. So there's something in the ground that is clearly impeding groundwater flow across it. It might not be a total barrier to flow. There's geochemical evidence that suggests there is some flow, but it limits the flow across that fault. And then last but not least, if we look at East Las Poses and we look north to south, just so we capture this Eppworth Gravels aquifer area, we've got the Eppworth Gravels on the north here on the right side, separated by a large chunk of the Upper San Pedro Formation, which is not a productive aquifer. People have wells screened in it. I don't mean to dispute that, but it's not called an aquifer of its own right. And there is flow from the Upper San Pedro Formation into the Fox Canyon aquifer, probably limited flow, slow flow leaking out of the Upper San Pedro Formation. And then you can also have vertical flow between the Fox Canyon aquifer. then you can also have vertical flow, uh, between the Fox Canyon and the Grimes. Again, here we've got infiltration along Arroyo-Los Poses, just like we saw in Pleasant Valley, that actually will recharge the underlying aquifers. Okay, so that's our overview. Let's look at how these basins interact based on the data that we have, and, and the sustain- start to talk about the sustainability indicators, um, for the, for these basins. So the sustainability indicators were defined under SIGMA to begin to manage these basins moving forward, right? So rather than looking, um, at just one or two specific indicators, SIGMA says you gotta look at all six. So these indicators are groundwater elevations, uh, change in storage, you gotta look at seawater intrusion, uh, changes in groundwater quality, subsidence, and, uh, the interaction between surface and, and groundwater, uh, surface water and groundwater. And they're all interrelated, right? There's no, you can't just pick one, um, they all affect each other. So if you have a decline in groundwater level adjacent to the coast, you can induce seawater intrusion, you can reduce the amount of groundwater in storage, you can pull down water levels so they are below surface water streams, uh, you can induce subsidence. So, so we will look at all of these together, although I will say that today, we're gonna focus primarily on groundwater elevations, 'cause that's where we have the most data, historical data for understanding the basins. That is directly tied to change in storage, and we'll look at seawater intrusion, and a, and a little bit at groundwater quality, specifically, um, well, we'll get to groundwater quality, we'll, we'll touch on sort of a couple of key issues, um, in each basin for groundwater quality. Uh, one thing to keep in mind, because there is the wealth of historical groundwater elevation data in these basins, um, there is a, a key line in the legislation, and this is not a quote from it, but basically, you can take one parameter, and it can serve as a proxy for the others, um, if you can show that there's a correlation between them. And so we have a huge amount, these basins have collected a huge amount of historical data on groundwater elevations, and, and right now, a number of the sustainability indicators in the current preliminary draft GSP are, are tied to groundwater elevation So let's look, I, I'm not, I'm not gonna go, for those of you who, um, attended, uh, any of the recent stakeholder meetings, I went through in, in painstaking detail every single hydrograph that we had in the GSPs, um, for the basin that was, was relevant, uh, except the ones in the appendices. I'm not gonna do that today, I'm, I'm just gonna pick a couple that are, are representative, so we see how, um, how we start to take this information and, and build it, uh, to a cohesive framework. So starting in this case with the Oxnard Aquifer, remember, we've got, excuse me, in the Oxnard Sub Basin, we've got the Oxnard Aquifer, but we've also got the Magoo Aquifer. So I'm gonna start with the Magoo Aquifer, which, in the Pleasant Valley Basin, is the older alluvium. Um, and this is a figure from the, the preliminary draft GSPs showing the fall water level contours in the Magoo Aquifer in 2015. That's a requirement for, under the legislation, you have to produce fall 2015 water level maps. So this is one of those maps that we've done for each aquifer. The wells we used to, uh, make this map were screened solely in the Magoo Aquifer, uh, and they had their water levels measured between October 2nd and October 29th. That was the ideal window that we could come up with, that was short enough to give us a glimpse in time that is required by these, um, fall maps, but long enough to include enough wells with enough data to, to sort of broaden our aerial scope of understanding. And we see in the Magoo Aquifer in the fall, that we have groundwater elevations ranging from 97.7 feet below sea level to minus 12 feet, so 12 feet below sea level. Um, and these blue arrows, again, are just diagrammatic representations of flow, they're not meant to, uh, they're not vectors. So, but we can see the direction of flow is perpendicular to these lines, more or less, but of course, we also have flow in, um, along the Magoo Canyon here, off the coast, and we would anticipate that there's probably flow in along Wayneemi Canyon as well. Um, and that the, the lower groundwater elevations, right, water flows downhill, so, so these arrows are pointing downhill, so to speak, in the aquifer. So the lowest groundwater elevations we're seeing are in the southern part of the Oxnard Sub Basin in this, uh, in this aquifer, in the fall of 2015. You'll also see that we have tied these to one well that we have in the Pleasant Valley Basin, and the, I think this is about to buzz at me again, I'm a little heavy-handed with the pointer, apparently it doesn't like me. Uh, if I can bring it up, here we go. So we've got one well in the Pleasant Valley Basin, that's in the older alluvium, that's that age equivalent to the Magoo. Um, and we will look in a minute at the actual, um, water level elevations through time for wells shown on these maps, but we're gonna first, uh, transition now to the namesake of this agency, the Fox Canyon Aquifer. Um, and this is, again, that same fall 2015 map, so again, measured between October 2nd and October 29th, um, and the arrows show flow direction. Um, we've got recharge, some recharge, um, in the Forbay, although not a lot of recharge that year, um, that we've got higher water level elevations in the Forbay, and the lowest is here, um, in this sort of bullseye, in the, in the eastern Oxnard Sub Basin. We've got elevations ranging from 156 feet below sea level in that bullseye to 15 feet above sea level. That highest elevation is in Pleasant Valley, so that's over here. Um, the lowest, as I said, is here. In the Forbay area, we have flow heading sort of south, um, a little bit southwest. There's also flow heading in to West Los Poses. We've got infiltration along the coast, I could have another area, arrow, excuse me, uh, in the Magoo Canyon area as well. So now we're gonna go through a few of these hydrographs, I promised not as many as before, but they are very informative. I mean, when, when we as hydrogeologists look at the, the hydrographs, they actually tell us a lot about how these basins operate, which is why we, we dwell on them probably too much. Um, I think you've seen before the cumulative departure from the mean curve in black as it goes down, it's a period of drought, below average rainfall, as it goes up, we've had a series of above-average rainfall years. And here we are looking at the Magoo Aquifer water levels, um, and we've got, uh, a longer-term record in this green here, that shows relatively good correlation with the cumulative departure from the mean. Um, and you will see that it, particularly in here, um, we've got this arrow showing that both the red and the green wells are in the Forbay area. So it's not necessarily, that correlation that we see is not necessarily that, um, they get more rainfall than anybody else, what, what they do get is spreading in years when United can spread groundwater. And so that's what drives that correlation and drives those high water levels. As we move away from the Forbay and to the south in the area of Point Magoo, we've got less impact from the spreading, and we've got more dampening effect from being close to the Pacific Ocean. And so these water levels in these wells don't show the same overall peaks, the change, I should say, in peak from year to year. The higher frequency, the rapid drawdowns that you see are, are related to pumping. So that's when water, when, uh, production is happening the most in that area. Pleasant Valley, this is that age equivalent sediment to the, uh, to the Magoo Aquifer. We've got that relatively good correlation, um, higher water levels in the shallower, uh, uh, part of that, lower aquifers in the lower screen, excuse me, lower water levels in the lower screen interval. Now we're gonna skip to the Fox Canyon Aquifer. Um, this is the figure from the GSP, it's a little bit crowded, there are a lot of wells on here, so I've, I've dropped off some of the wells, because I've kept the ones that are illustrative of the, the trends, but you, you see all the wells in the preliminary draft GSP. Um, and again, the cumulative departure from the mean here. So what do we see? We've got, again, the Forbay wells in the, in the Fox Canyon in purple, it's got the highest, uh, water level. This light, um, light blue is in the Point Magoo area, and this slightly darker teal-ish color is in that pumping trough, that bullseye in the eastern part of the Oxnard Sub Basin. Um, along Port Wayneemi here, we've got a, this well in dark blue, and you'll see that it doesn't have nearly those same groundwater elevation differences between the high and the low. That's, of course, mitigated by seawater intrusion at times, the, the level of the Pacific Ocean, um, and the same is true in some, in the Point Magoo area wells. Um, it also might, that particular well might be, uh, not be a pumping well, I haven't checked that recently. Um, moving now into western, West Los Poses, so the, the area adjacent to the, the Forbay, um, we do have wells in western West Los Poses that are, um, that show a good correlation with the cumulative departure from the mean, but not all of them do. Um, and so we have different influences, uh, in, in that area, and if I zoom in on these, um, you know, we've got, we've got good correlation here in this green well, the orange one doesn't actually respond in the, in the same way. So not all of that area is getting, um, the same recharge that we saw in the Forbay wells in Oxnard. And as we move farther east, we don't see that at all. So now we're, we're farther east in West Los Poses, um, and the correlation between, uh, the cumulative departure and the water levels is, is pretty much gone here. What we do see instead is a long-term drawdown in those wells, um, for which we have older data. So we've got, um, a well going back to the early 1950s, a break in between, we don't know what happened here, and when we pick up water levels in that well again, in the mid-seventies, it is now, uh, 100 feet plus below where it was, but again, we don't know what happened here, we just know it's lower by the time we, we measure it again. Um, and then water levels in that well decline, along with other wells decline, into the nineties. There was a period of time when Caiegas was delivering Inlu deliveries to, um, the West Los Poses area, so instead of pumping, they would use Caiegas deliveries, um, and water levels in the, the aquifer recovered during that time period. Pleasant Valley, um, also, although it seems like maybe there's a good correlation here, you actually don't really see the effects of the, the drought that we see here, um, on water levels in the Pleasant Valley aquifer. And what we're seeing here is actually more, excuse me, the Pleasant Valley Basin in the Fox Canyon Aquifer. Um, what we're seeing here is actually more of, uh, the impact of, again, uh, management actions and projects in the basin, as well as the inflow, the eventual inflow, along Arroyo-Los Poses of surface water that is starting to recharge the basin and is mitigating that drought effect, and is actually, um, allowing water, allowing water levels to, to come up in that, over that time period through here. And then here's the, the poster child for, uh, the impact of the flow in Arroyo-Los Poses. So we've moved now to east Los Poses, and there is no correlation in these water levels with the cumulative departure from the mean curve. What instead we do see is surface water flows from upstream, Simi Valley wastewater treatment plant, de-watering wells in Simi Valley. Those surface water flows make it into, uh, make it as surface water into east Los Poses, infiltrate into the alluvium around the Arroyo, and eventually infiltrate into the deeper aquifers as well, and you get a recovery here between, you know, the, the mid-1970s and the, the 1990s here, that's a, you know, 150-foot plus, well, 100, 100 to 125-foot recovery in groundwater elevation. And then, uh, lastly, if we look at, uh, the other water levels in the Fox Canyon groundwater, Fox Canyon Aquifer in the, uh, east Los Poses Management Area, um, we see that same trend that we saw in the previous one, where we've got that ground, a surface water infiltration causing an increase in the groundwater elevations. Um, and we just see, uh, over here, again, the, um, influence of Caiegas Inlu deliveries and aquifer storage and recovery impacts in this part of the basin, um, and, and distance from the Arroyo impacts the, uh, the elevation overall of the wells and how much recharge it saw. So that's groundwater elevation. Seawater intrusion, we're gonna look at, um, a cross-section from north to south, along here, along the coast, uh, in the Oxnard Sub Basin. We know that with those groundwater elevations that I was talking about in the Magoo Aquifer, um, where none of them in the fall of 2015 were above sea level, you would anticipate inducing seawater intrusion. And so right now, um, looking again, north is on the left, so this would be the mound sub-basin, the Santa Clara River, and the south over here is Highway 1. This is the Bailey Fault, so this is the end of that Fox Canyon jurisdictional boundary, right here. There is no Fox Canyon Aquifer to the south of that, although it's still within the DWR Basin boundary, and we have, uh, seawater intrusion from the Magoo Canyon coming in along the coast there. United has done a tremendous amount of modeling work and looked at the, the geochemistry. Um, they would be better able to speak to the details of it, but right now, the current thinking on seawater intrusion in that area, and in the, the Magoo Canyon area, um, is that seawater intrusion occurs primarily in the upper aquifer system, and then vertical gradients, so we talked in some of those, uh, cross-sections about vertical flow between the aquifers, so that vertical gradients actually pull that seawater intrusion down into the lower aquifer system. So they see a, a more limited, direct connection from the ocean in the lower aquifer system, a more, uh, cohesive connection in the upper aquifer system. Nonetheless, there is seawater intrusion that gets into both aquifer systems in that Groundwater quality is influenced not only by seawater intrusion, but by, um, by other processes in the basins as well. Uh, I'm gonna start with east Los Poses, because, um, I think there's been a tremendous amount of discussion, and there's ongoing discussion, about how to address water quality in, uh, these preliminary draft GSPs. Right now, there is not a specific minimum threshold for groundwater quality. That is just in this current preliminary draft, and we've already discussed many times, that's an area for, for board input and discussion. Some of the groundwater quality concerns that we see in the east Los Poses Basin are shown in this plot, which is actually from one of the appendices, which shows five different, five different constituents. The, uh, total dissolved solids is TDS, um, it's measured in two different ways, the chloride concentration, nitrate, sulfate, and boron concentrations. And I think the easiest one to see here is in the, in the nitrate concentration that rises with time, this is the 1960 into the present. We also see it in the totals dissolved solids, and what this is, is the influence of that wastewater treatment plant discharge and the shallow de-watering wells discharged to the Arroyo. So while we have actual recharge along the Arroyo, that water quality is of poorer quality than was native to the groundwater basins. People are using it. Um, and the question here, when we're starting to think about minimum thresholds, is, is, relates to spreading of this water throughout the basin, and what's, what's significant and unreasonable? And that's up to local control. Uh, if we look at the Oxnard Forbay, uh, one of the concerns in this area is actually nitrate concentrations in the groundwater, those are shown in red here, and you'll see that those go up and down quite a bit with time, and those go up and down basically with the amount of water that's available to spread. So the more water that we have, that United has to spread, you dilute the nitrate concentration, the concentration goes down, um, the less water there is to spread, the nitrate concentration goes up. Again, there's no specific minimum threshold proposed in the preliminary draft for nitrate. What's significant and unreasonable, that's, that's a topic for discussion here. Um, and then, again, in northwestern Pleasant Valley, we actually see, it's a little harder to, to see, um, in these plots, but there is a change in the chloride concentrations, um, which are shown in green here over time, and, and they creep up here. So the question is, what's driving this chloride concentration? Um, and there is some- And there is some upwelling of brines from lower formations that are not typically used as aquifers. And that upwelling of the brine may be influencing groundwater quality in the Pleasant Valley So we've talked a little bit about groundwater level. We talked a lot about groundwater levels, although not in every basin and every well. We've talked, the groundwater levels are certainly connected to the change in storage. We talked a little bit about seawater intrusion, which this board is certainly well aware of, and a little bit about the groundwater quality issues. I'm not going to get into subsidence today, I'm not going to get into interconnected surface water and groundwater. We'll, we'll talk about that more when we're talking about minimum thresholds and management in the next board workshop, although if you have questions, again, feel free to pose those at any time. So I am going to move now to the last structural part of the Chapter 2 discussion, in the last sort of formal part of this presentation, and talk about water budgets and the development of water budgets. You've seen this slide a number of times, this is the simple way of thinking about a water budget, just like you would think about your checking account. How much water do you have stored in the basin? Is that S value? And then, what are you putting in, and what are you taking out? And, you know, I've, I've thrown up that last bullet. These basins are more complicated, we've talked about the geology, we've talked about some of the management actions, we've talked about the production, which is all, they all add to the, to the complications in that equation. And as a result of that, I'm going to emphasize here, not everything in that equation can be precisely measured. And we're going to talk about that a little bit moving forward with how these water budgets were developed, and which parts were measured, and which parts were estimated. And the changes in those estimates, we've talked about at these meetings in the past, where numbers have changed based on the best way of coming up with those estimates. But they remain estimates. So how is it that we actually developed these water budgets for the, for the groundwater sustainability plans? We have a different approach depending on the amount of information available to us, and then the amount of modeling that's been done in the different basins. So in east Los Poses basin, when the preliminary drafts were produced, there was no numerical groundwater model yet completed for that, that part of the world. And so there was an analytical approach that was taken, which was, you know, going around and, and asking, gathering the data that would support how much water's coming in, how much water is, is going out. So it's an analytical approach and getting data from different places to put together to develop a water budget. In the west Los Poses basin, there's a bit of a hybrid approach there, where again, we've got some, as the preliminary draft GSPs were produced, there was some preliminary information from a numerical groundwater model, but we were also going through and doing some of that analytical gathering of data and coming up with the water budget for that part of, part of the basin. And then for the Oxnard and Pleasant Valley basins, it's primary, primarily based on a numerical groundwater model. So I'm going to make an analogy here, and I hope you guys stick with me on this. The, the difference in these approaches is, you know, if I, I like to bake. So if I bring in a pie, but I've already cut it up, and I give each of you a piece of that pie, and you don't, you don't get to see anybody else's piece. And I ask you individually, how much of that pie did you get? You'll give me an estimate. You'll say, yeah, I got about a quarter of the pie, right? Well, if all five of you tell me you got about a quarter of the pie, that, that doesn't work. It's an estimate, it's, it's an overestimate in this case, right? But the numerical model is an improvement on that analytical approach because it actually has to adjust all of the parameters. When you adjust one, you're going to adjust the others. And so it won't let you get bigger than that whole pie. It doesn't, there are still estimates in the numerical model, right? But it's, it's affecting all of, all of them as you make those changes. So we'd like to move towards the numerical modeling approach, and, and in the east Los Poses basin, that's being worked on, and it's, I think there's a preliminary, preliminary model that's been presented, and there's discussion going on with that, but it wasn't ready in time yet for these preliminary draft GSPs. So actually, before I, before I move on to that list of, of numbers, the only other thing I, I want to say about the numerical modeling is that the way that it gets to that, it has to keep it within one pie, is that it's correlated to groundwater levels. So I know that I've, I've bored many of you to tears with my discussion of groundwater levels through time, but that is really what the, how the numerical model checks itself, is to look at groundwater levels. And if it's predicting groundwater levels and they match the historical, then you come up with correlation statistics on how, how well it's doing at predicting those levels. Okay. So let's look at Oxnard. This is one of the basins where we do have the numerical model, primarily numerical model results in looking at the recharge for this basin, and this is what's in the preliminary draft GSP. Not the actual majority of the recharge, but the largest component of the recharge is spreading from those United Water Conservation District spreading basins. Forty-four percent of the recharge is spreading. You've got 19% is agricultural and municipal industrial return flows that are getting into the, the aquifer. 12% is leakage from the Santa Clara River, 9% inflow from other adjacent groundwater basins and the Pacific Ocean, in this case. Direct percolation of rainfall, smaller percentage, 2%, is from water distribution system leaking, a small percentage from septic returns and from mountain front recharge. And the total, again, this is based on the numerical model and the estimates that were involved in the numerical model at the time that this was produced. And the total is about 110,000 acre-feet per year of recharge. But let's keep in mind here that this total includes seawater intrusion. So this is not a sustainable yield, this is just the inflow estimated from primarily the numerical model. But this is a, a different way of looking at that same list of numbers. So of all of those numbers that I just threw up there, what's the one that we have measured? We have spreading measured, shown as the solid part. The rest of these are estimates in the numerical model. Now, they all have to work together. If you change these along with the, the outflows, it all has to, it all has to balance out so that we can get to those water level correlations. But they are estimates. So the rest of those components of, of recharge were estimated in the numerical model.
Question for you.
Yeah.
Can you go back?
Yeah.
So obviously, over the past couple of years, United has been unable to spread much, if any, water. The lack of that, spreading being available or being able to quantify that amount, does it help you now with the other numbers and being able to tighten up on what the estimates are?
Um, that's a good question, and I will admit readily that I am not as aware of the inner workings of the United model as I would be comfortable speculating about for that. But yes, I, I mean, I, at some level, right, because they all work together, the years in which there is no spreading, or very limited spreading, and along with the years where you know the production from the basin, can help tighten, tighten the correlation with water levels. There is no specific, unique solution, though, right? So you could tighten that correlation with water levels by changing those estimates a little bit in different ways, and just all having them still balance out.
I just was thinking if there's, for instance, this year, there's been zero spreading because there's been no water in the river, there's no stream leakage.
Right.
I mean, you start checking things off here, and you can start...
Right. You, you want to take that water budget equation that we started with, where I said things get complicated, and you want to make it as simple as possible, right? And yes, I mean, I, I think it is useful because it's additional data, but in this case, because the spreading is the one thing that we measure, I'm not sure that it, it provides a huge amount of additional support for the modeling assumptions going from zero to, to something else that we measured. I think if, if we took out one of these things that we, we didn't measure, right? In, in this case, stream leakage, right? That, that could be helpful for that.
Okay, thank you.
Anything you want to add? Now, so switching now to the discharge components, it's a much shorter list. As far as discharge is concerned, we've got, pumping is the majority, flow to agricultural drains, right, draining, the shallow groundwater subsurface outflows to the, the adjacent basins and, and the Pacific Ocean, and discharge to the Santa Clara River. We've got a total here of about 102,000, 103,000 acre-feet per year from the United model. And we're going to now switch to that pie chart view of the world, where this actually looks pretty good, right? We've, we've got 78% is pumping, and we've actually measured that. And you could take another big bite of the apple here and start to measure flow to the drains, and you'd actually have a pretty good handle overall on the discharge from Oxnard. That would be a future project, that would have to be something that you would decide to do to measure that additional piece. Pleasant Valley, running from highest to lowest, we've got, and again, let me emphasize, for both Pleasant Valley and for west Los Poses, excuse me, for all of Los Poses, you know, these were the numbers that were available at the time of the preliminary draft GSPs. And we've talked about the estimates, and the estimates have already changed, and we've seen some of those pie charts. But this is what's in the preliminary draft GSP. We've got 34% is stream leakage from Conejo Creek, 24% is inflow from east Los Poses. I think that is what Director Borchard may have been questioning earlier. That, that number is bound to be reduced in the future, both from a, a better modeling estimates that are coming out for that, and also from actually physically reduced, as, if we're talking about future water scenarios, because the flow in the Arroyo is actually anticipated to decrease as wastewater treatment plants upgrade their facilities and, and keep that water in, in the Simi Valley area. 13% is agricultural and M&amp;I return flows, 11 rainfall, 7 mountain front recharge, stream leakage, distribution systems. And when we get down here, we've got a small portion of septic system inflow, and the total is about 28,000 acre-feet per year. This does not include impacts to adjacent basins, so we're not here looking at what this might do to the Oxnard basin, we're not looking at any connection to the east Los Poses area. And as I just said, the inflow from east Los Poses will likely be reduced moving forward. Now, if we look at this pie chart, it's maybe not quite as comforting as some of the Oxnard ones, where we have estimates for all of these different components. We have pretty good estimates for all these, these components, and in fact, they are factored in to the water levels in the Oxnard basin, because this is part of the overall United groundwater numerical model. And so all of these things have to work together in order for that model to come to calibration, but we don't actually directly measure any of the components of the recharge in Pleasant Valley basin. There's no direct physical measurement. If we look at discharge, most, well, the largest piece, I should say, is agricultural pumping. We've got outflow to Oxnard and west Los Poses. This is going to change because of changes in the, the numerical modeling. We've got 18% is municipal industrial, 6 is riparian habitat, transpiring water out of the basin, 3% is return flow to drains, and 1 is domestic pumping, for a total of about 28,000, 29,000 acre-feet per year. And again, the subsurface outflow is anticipated to change with additional model updates. I think it's already changed since the preliminary draft GSP.
Excuse me. So we're having subsurface outflow from PV to the west Los Poses basin?
Well, yes, in this particular model. So this is based on a single model run, a single set of assumptions for the numerical model, which has already been rearranged because of concerns over this particular number in the model. So, so this, that number will in fact decrease. And just, I wanted to be clear to, to show what's in the preliminary drafts, because these are the numbers that are in the tables that you have before you. But as these estimates are refined, as the model is looked at more, you know, we, we come up, we come up with, is too loose of a term. We analyze the data, right, and we, we can, we can refine our estimates better. And so this, this was one of those situations where that's already been addressed. But it didn't make it into the preliminary draft GSP. Discharge, again, you're going to see the discharge plots are, are pretty similar across the basins, although they've been in, in Pleasant Valley and in Los Poses, they're pulled out into components. We, we measure pumping, that's what we know about discharge, and the rest are estimates. So the subsurface outflow is an estimate, this pie piece will shrink, and these are also estimates in the, in Pleasant Valley. Moving to west Los Poses, again, because it's all tied together, right, we were just talking about that number from Pleasant Valley to west Los Poses, as a discharge in Pleasant Valley, well, that's got to be counted as recharge in west Los Poses. So that's part of what accounts for this 50% number for subsurface inflows. That's already been adjusted based on the additional modeling work that's been done since the preliminary draft GSPs. 18% mountain front recharge, 17 precipitation, agriculture and M&amp;I return, septic returns, and leakage from the distribution systems, for a total of about 12,000 acre-feet per year. And we're back to a pie chart where we're looking at reasonable estimates of all of the parameters, we're not measuring these. And the west Los Poses discharge, here we've got the bulk, 81% agricultural pumping, 12% M&amp;I, riparian transpiration, subsurface flow to Oxnard and PV, and domestic pumping, for a total of about 16,000 acre-feet per year. So here, we know the discharge pretty well, right? We've got the bulk of the discharge covered. And you've got to remember, in the numerical model, because it all works together, the discharges have to work with the recharge as well. So even though we've got estimates and those pieces of the pie can change, we're not looking at vastly changing the size of the pie, because if we did that, then things wouldn't balance out in the water levels. And if we go, I think this is lastly, to east Los Poses, recharge components, 66% is inflow from Simi Valley. So that's that exterior flow, that's the water quality concerns that we've heard discussed somewhat, but the water quality recharge to that part of the Los Poses basin is from surface water flows that infiltrate into the Arroyo. Moore Park wastewater treatment plant is, releases water to the Arroyo as well, we've got precipitation percolation, irrigation return, aquifer storage and recovery, subsurface inflow, leakage from water distribution system, and septic returns, and we've had a range on this. Now, remember, as we move into east Los Poses, we're now talking about solely that sort of analytical approach to this, we're, we've moved out of the realm of a numerical model. So we've got a bigger range on what we understand in these estimates. They are all estimates at this time, although, I should say, they were all estimates at the time that the groundwater sustainability plans were produced, the preliminary drafts. They remain estimates, but they have been incorporated into a numerical model to make things work together more cohesively. And then, as we look at discharge in east Los Poses, pumping is the, the largest portion, and, and we've got a range of 24,000 to 30,000 acre-feet per year. So again, here, we have a pretty good idea of what's going out, but we do have some estimated parameters as well. So I've said this a number of So, I've said this a number of times in a number of different stakeholder meetings, and I think it's important to keep in mind, because I didn't want to scare you with the pie plot, the pie charts, I think it's important to keep in mind that while it is critical to understand the historical sustainable yield of these basins, and to do that as best we can at this point in time, that moving forward, the basins are not going to be managed based on those historical sustainable yield numbers. In fact, they have to be managed based on the sustainable yield as defined under SIGMA. And so, there's a little bit of potential confusion that I want to try to clarify in what's in the preliminary draft GSPs and the language in the preliminary draft GSPs. And that surrounds this term, historical sustainable yield versus historical safe yield. In the preliminary drafts, it's referred to as the historical sustainable yield, because that's the language that's adopted under SIGMA. But if we were really looking at the historical sustainable yield, we would have had to have defined all of our undesirable results and figured out what they were and what the minimum thresholds were, and how have we avoided them in the past. And that's not required under SIGMA. What is instead required is a look at the historical safe yield, which is this water balance approach. And so, the safe yield is actually defined as the rate at which groundwater can be withdrawn without causing a long-term decline in the water table or the pezimetric surface. So, the GSP has adopted sort of that SIGMA terminology, but really, what we're talking about is a historical safe yield. And I want to try to be as clear on that as I can moving forward. For today's presentation, we're going to refer to it as the safe yield, because it doesn't come from an analysis of significant and unreasonable and undesirable results. Okay? What it is looking at is that long-term decline in groundwater elevations, or what's coming in to the basins, basically. In the Oxnard Plain, if you go back several slides, the first water budget slide I showed, we've got the historical safe yield is about 110,000 acre-feet per year. It's not sustainable, because it includes seawater intrusion in there. That is the number, though, that you will find in the Table 213 for the Oxnard Preliminary Draft GSP. And in order to look at the historical safe yield, we asked United to run this model Scenario F, which is a no-project scenario where there was a uniform cutback. So, it's the simplest modeling cutback. It is not meant to be a management strategy, but how much cutback would need to occur for there to be no or very limited seawater intrusion in these basins, in the Oxnard Basin? And the result of that single run, one realization, simple 50% cutback, is that it would be about 39,000 acre-feet per year as a safe yield with no seawater intrusion. In fact, in that, there's a little bit of flow out to the Pacific Ocean, in the upper aquifer system, a little bit less in in the lower, you know? If there were a management strategy, you could shift that pumping around, but that was not the intent of that model run. Okay? Yeah?
We should just make the point that the 110 was all the inputs, the 39,000 here was pumping only. So, the historical average pumping was more on the order of 78,000 acre-feet. So, if you're not going from 110 to 39, it's more like 78,000.
Can you turn to the board? You want to come say that? I'm going to grab a drink of water.
Hi, Peter Quinlan, the DUDAC. I just, this slide just bothered me, and it just occurred to me what it was about it that bothered me. We talk about the historical safe yield being, you know, the inflow historically, but that was many more components than just the pumping. And when we modeled, or when we asked United to model just cutbacks, uniform cutbacks throughout the basin, the pumping was 39,000 acre-feet. And you need to compare that to the historical pumping, which was 78,000, not 110, in the Clear as mud, right?
I guess the simplest way of saying that is that it was a 50% cutback, right? So, we're at 39,000 acre-feet instead of 78,000 acre-feet of pumping. And so, with the rapid math in my head, we're looking at another 30,000-plus acre-feet that would be tacked on to this as the historical safe yield. For Pleasant Valley, if we look at the water balance historical safe yield for that, we've got about 28,000 acre-feet per year. And going again to this 50% cutback model, this Scenario F, the historical, and I blew it on this, the historical sustainable yield factoring in seawater intrusion is about 10,000 acre-feet per year. In West Los Poses, we've got the historical safe yield at about 12,000 acre-feet per year, and in East, it's that range of 16,000 to 23,000 acre-feet per year. These numbers that are shown here are basically just the amalgamated numbers that you've seen on previous slides at the bottom of that percentage for the recharge components to the basins. So, what's coming next, right? We've said that we're not managing based on the historical...
Excuse me. Could you go back one slide, please? So, you've got water balance for Oxnard and Pleasant Valley. You've got the historical safe yield and the historical sustainable yield.
Yeah.
With Los Poses, you've only had the historical safe yield.
Right. And that's because we didn't have the numerical model prepared.
Got it.
So, what's coming up? We've got what should be very familiar from the first sequence of slides that you've seen. To beat a dead horse, we've got to actually address sustainability under SIGMA. And so, we've got to actually talk about what are the sustainability goals? What are the goals for these basins? What is the local definition of significant and unreasonable for the sustainability indicators? What are the minimum thresholds associated with those definitions? What are the measurable objectives, interim milestones? And then, coming up, because you're going to be measuring sustainability based on those criteria, you've got to be able to actually monitor what's happening in the basin. And so, what's the best way of using both the existing monitoring networks that you have, and perhaps augmenting them with additional monitoring stations after taking a look at where some of the data gaps are, to better define some of those pieces of the pie that we're really interested in refining, and also in order to really understand whether or not we've met the sustainable management criteria that the board has set forth in the preliminary draft, and, excuse me, ultimately, in the actual GSPs?
Jill, could you go back?
Yeah.
So, has SIGMA defined what is significant and what is unreasonable?
No. That is not defined. So, I struggle with this a lot, because I like straightforward definitions. And the sustainability indicators, I might get this wrong, but I think they are something like the conditions throughout the basin that when significant and unreasonable, become undesirable results. That's the definition, more or less, under SIGMA. And so, then, when you look for what the definition of undesirable results is, it's the inverse of that definition. So, the undesirable results are the significant and unreasonable, and so, no. Significant and unreasonable is what we will be wrestling with, what this board will be wrestling with, because it's left to local decisions. So, we've seen this slide before. There are many, many paths, potential paths, to sustainability, and that's really what's coming up, right? Is how we actually tie the technical understanding of the basins together with the policy decisions that you will be making to determine a path towards a future sustainable yield. Now, the technical aspects can tighten. So, if we have this blue, the solid blue line, as the estimated sustainable yield, the technical work, the additional technical work, can maybe tighten up the uncertainty around that sustainable yield. You can potentially have some projects that come online to increase the sustainable yield. But this orange path is set entirely based on the interim milestones that the board will determine, and where it lands at that sustainable yield after 20 years, and how we get there is up to this board. And there will be a lot more discussion of that at the next board workshop. But that is the end of the formal presentation. I'm seeing yawning. I'm clearly, I've reached a good stopping point. But I think there's a lot of information for discussion.
Thank you, Jill. Questions from the board?
Well done. Good presentation.
I did. Thank you.
Questions from the public? Any questions from the general public on the presentation you've heard today?
Must have been a good presentation.
I guess so. I guess so. No questions, no comments? Jill, if you do this one more time, that's... No, I appreciate the clarity that. And I saw this presentation the last time, it was part of this presentation last time, and each time I'm able to view it, I get a little bit more out of it. I appreciate that. The, I do have, Jürgen, I do have some questions about how we're going to get to those interim milestones, but that's not part of this presentation. We'll wait on that. Please, Jürgen.
What would a meeting be without a question from Jürgen?
Over.
Truer than you know. I saw in this presentation for the first time a management area in the southeast Oxnard Basin. And so, I'm wondering how that got carved out, why it got carved out. You said that there wasn't, the Fox Canyon Aquifer wasn't there. Then, what is there?
Chair West, Rectors, Mr. Gramco, I might best be able to answer that. And so, what is there is SIGMA says that we have to manage the entire basin as it was designated by DWR, Department of Water Resources. So, the Fox Canyon jurisdiction only extended through the Fox Canyon Aquifer, as Jill mentioned, but there are other aquifers that are interconnected with, at different levels, and it's principally the trace of the Bailey Fault there. But that area is not managed by Fox Canyon, but it was, it is managed by two other entities that have come together to claim that area, and that is the Camrosa Water District in both Pleasant Valley and in Oxnard, filed with the state to be the GSA in the area of their service area, which is a good portion, if not the majority, of those two areas. And then, the County of Ventura filed for the other areas that were called in the term of white areas, they're outside of another jurisdiction. And so, ultimately, what will happen is Fox Canyon will work with the county and with Camrosa Water District GSA to jointly manage those areas. But because the Fox Canyon doesn't have the jurisdiction there, then they'll have to manage them jointly, and they'll be in agreement with both the county and Camrosa to manage them together under the GSA. Did they answer that?
Could you put that map back up? I know it's a long ways back, but...
I'll let you find it.
This is the one-minute version.
That's right. That's the one everyone would prefer.
I think you went past it.
No, it was pink.
Well, okay, there it is.
It was white-pink.
Right. That's for the Oxnard, the other was for the Pleasant Valley basin. It's the same situation in both basins.
So, who's the GSA for that first one? The pink one or purple one?
For the Oxnard?
Yeah.
Previous slide.
The previous slide. It is, Camrosa is the GSA.
Well, Camrosa doesn't go down that far.
They do.
Down as far as the previous slide?
Down to the university.
Whoop, I went the wrong way. Whoop, I didn't go far enough, okay.
There we go.
Yes, they do come down into that area. They're principally in, larger portion of the service area is in the Pleasant Valley, but it does come into Oxnard. And then, the rest of the area that was not covered by an agency was filed for by the county with the intention of entering an agreement to have Fox Canyon manage it.
Which is that next slide, the yellow section?
No, no, it's just me.
It's a different area.
... So, right here, Pleasant Valley comes into the north end of East Oxnard Plain Management Area. The bulk of it, the southern bulk of it's unincorporated county. I think that's your question, Chair Borcherd. And then, up above in the Pleasant Valley, it's the county and all...
That's what I was asking about this. I didn't think that Camrosa came down this far for this one.
Tony?
They go up to the next one.
Yeah, it's just a hair. Do you have any facilities here, Tony? I don't, in Oxnard? Or is it just your boundary that comes down this far?
No, we have a facility that's actually split by the boundary of the basin.
So, they have pumps and treatment plant, or...
The round-on treatment plant.
It's up north.
Yeah, it actually comes down this far.
Their treatment plant, I meant.
Right.
That is, we have the northern small portion...
Tony, come on up.
Yeah, for the recording and for the people streaming this, they won't be able to hear it.
Okay. I want to thank Jürgen for extending his speaker.
No, the northern portion of the Oxnard, we just have a small portion of that. And then, most of it's going to be the county. Now, the Pleasant Valley portion of it, we have a larger portion, but it's still...
The next slide.
The next slide. But they're both split up between Camrosa and the county. Just in the Oxnard, we have a much less, a smaller area.
Okay. Got it.
And Director Craven, there's the same situation up in the Moore Park area of Los Poses, eastern Los Poses Management Area, that's now been registered with the state by the county. And so, we'll be coming back to your board to talk a lot more about the management of that, and we'll be working out the agreements of how that management will be handled, but it'll all be managed under the same GSPs. But that's the confusion there.
Okay.
Any other questions? Then, we are adjourned until Wednesday at 1:30.
I've only got five big meetings between...
Is that all? Just five.